All right, well, it is so nice to see everybody here in the chambers with us this evening. This is our actually second business meeting for the day. And this is our business meeting with our newly seated commission members. So the first item of business is calling this meeting to order. So I'm calling the City Commission Business Meeting for Monday, November 17th, 2025, at 7:00 PM to order. And first order, we'll call Clerk Borley.
Commissioner Hess.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
At present.
Commissioner Prado.
Present.
Commissioner Slaby.
Present.
Mayor Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Duncan.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here, thank you Clerk Borley. For our opening ceremony this evening, we are honored to have Pastoral Intern, is that correct? All right, Joel Han, here from, is that Emmanuel Fellowship Church? All right, welcome. I'm going to ask him to come forward. And prior to his invocation, I will ask everyone to please stand and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, you have created this world and govern it by your power. And you've called men and women to hold wicked men and women to account, to defend the righteous, to protect the poor and the powerless, to remove any barrier to the proper worship of the holy God, and to the spread of the good news of Jesus Christ. Lord, we pray that the mayor and the commissioners of this commission would be blessed with wisdom, humility, compassion, and honesty. And Lord, that you would use them to your purposes in this world. God, we pray that each and every one of those gathered here today would be used for your will in this world, that what is good might prosper, and that wickedness would be controlled and be held to account in our land. And we pray that not only would we walk before you in a way that is pleasing to you, but that by your will, we would all become your precious children by the faith in our Lord Jesus Christ. We ask us all in Jesus's name and by the power of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For our guests this evening, we do have the Kalamazoo County Public Art Commission here and report. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Mayor, as well as Vice Mayor Duncan, for having us today. I'm Patrick Hirschberger, Commissioner of the Kalamazoo County Public Arts Commission with Ann Videtic, who is our City Representative to KC PAC Commission. Since 1981, the Kalamazoo County Public Arts Commission, or KC PAC as it's better known, has supported the public art-related objectives of the city of Kalamazoo and Kalamazoo County. In 1986, the city of Portage entered into an existing urban cooperative agreement for the same purposes. We have before you in a packet both our bylaws, as well as our current roster, and our end-of-year report, which I'm here to present today. In 2025, KC PAC was proud to host, as members, individuals from the Arts Council of Greater Kalamazoo, Discover Kalamazoo, the Kalamazoo Institute of Arts, and the American Institute of Arts, Thank You, and the Kalamazoo Public Library, among others. The KC PAC's knowledge base is broad, its members' personal interests and talents wonderfully vary, and their goals align towards enhancing vibrancy of the Kalamazoo's built environment for betterment of all. Each month, our member volunteers their time for projects and regular meetings. In 2025, our meetings occur monthly on the Fourth Wednesday from 5:30 to 6:30 PM in the Arts Council's Greater Kalamazoo's facilities. Our full 2025 roster is attached to this report. The Edison Neighborhood Association met with us to discuss plans and logistics for the Washington Square Pedestrian Scramble this year, which did happen later in August. The yet-to-be-installed sculpture to be placed in the front of the Creamery apartment building was also discussed, and that is in progress. This year has been a particularly significant one for KC PAC and the broader Kalamazoo arts community, as the Brush the Block mural festival, which happened in September, hosted by Arts Council of Greater Kalamazoo, proved to be a smashing success. It resulted in half a dozen brand-new murals across downtown Kalamazoo and massive engagement from the public. I'm pleased to report that KC PAC was involved throughout the duration of the planning and, excuse me, and its execution of Brush the Block, with the ACKG Program Manager, Kim Shaw, bringing news and exciting developments to each of our monthly meetings for consideration and feedback. During the festival, KC PAC hosted a public arts panel discussion featuring local artists. Panelists answered questions from members of the public concerning their experiences in creating public art, from sculptures to murals to graffiti, the trials and tribulations involved in organizing and marketing public art events and installations, and ways in which community members can involve themselves in the process. Since 2020, KC PAC has installed 20 PixelSticks Plaque Works of Public Art with Plaque for another 12 pieces slated, including those from Brush the Block. In the spring of 2026, PixelSticks Plaque are attractive, durable, affordable, and connect visitors to web-based multimedia concerning the work and an artist in question. For more information, you can head over to pixelsticks.com/kcpac. Lastly, KC PAC also continues our partnership with Bike Friendly Kalamazoo this year through leadership of their Fall Bike Celebration Art Committee. To date, Bike Friendly Kalamazoo and KC PAC have collaborated to commission three murals created by Kalamazoo-based artists located in the city of Kalamazoo, the city of Portage, and the city of Galesburg, dedicated to celebrating the joys of cycling. This year, Bike Friendly Kalamazoo is looking to have a building for their next mural for 2026, so interested business owners can get ahold of them at bikefriendlykalamazoo.org-public-art. As KC PAC plans for the coming year, we will continue to hold our regular meetings in the Epic Center from 5:30 to 6:30 PM on the Fourth Wednesday of each month. These meetings conform to the Open Meeting Act, and all interested members of the public are welcome to join us. Artists, building owners, project managers, and anyone planning on or interested in planning public art projects throughout Kalamazoo and wishing to be included in our agenda are encouraged to contact us at info@kalamazuacity.org. KC PAC is currently seeking an art historian for the calendar year of 2026. This position specifically required by KC PAC bylaws is currently held by the author of this report, Patrick Shelby, who is our current chair and will be retiring after 14 years of consecutive membership. We will miss him. On a personal note, Patrick says that as a founding member of the KC PAC Commission, he found it to be an incredibly valuable and unique volunteer opportunity, especially for someone with his background in the library. He is not an artist. Membership in KC PAC is a fantastic way to get involved in making Kalamazoo a brighter space to live and work and meet fascinating individuals, to accomplish shared goals. Interested parties are encouraged to contact us and join our monthly meetings. In closing, I would like to offer my earnest thanks to Kalamazoo City Commission, the staff for the city of Kalamazoo, and our city of Kalamazoo representative, Ann Videtic, for their continued support for the Kalamazoo County Public Arts Commission and our amazing arts community at large. As always, KC PAC stands ready to assist with any and all public art projects in all stages from planning to review. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thanks for coming here.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is something that we always look forward to, and that is recognizing great work that's been happening over a period of time here in the city of Kalamazoo. And this evening, we're recognizing Building Blocks of Kalamazoo 30th Anniversary. So if there's anybody here from Building Blocks for that, please come forward now. Vice Mayor Hess will be reading the proclamation. I'm sorry, Commissioner Hess. Sorry, Vice Mayor Duncan, that might tip you a little bit.
So this gives me great pleasure to read because of my many years spent at Kalamazoo College and being there when, in fact, Building Blocks was a class at Kalamazoo College taught by Dr. Cummings. So this is Building Blocks of Kalamazoo 30th Anniversary 2025. Whereas Building Blocks of Kalamazoo was founded in 1995 by Kalamazoo College Professor Kim Cummings to empower resident groups, one block at a time, to enhance the quality of neighborhood life. And whereas for 30 years, Building Blocks has worked alongside neighbors to envision and create vibrant communities where residents have the tools to voice and voice to address block-level issues. And whereas Building Blocks is committed to prioritizing support for historically marginalized neighborhoods, including Eastside, Edison, Northside, Vine, West Douglas, and working to address systemic inequities. And whereas guided by the values of inclusion, collaboration, empowerment, equity, trust, community, and teamwork, Building Blocks has built lasting partnerships with residents, local organizations, and civic leaders to co-create solutions that reflect the needs and aspirations of the people it serves. And whereas the 30th anniversary of Building Blocks of Kalamazoo is an opportunity to celebrate its legacy, honor the residents, staff, and volunteers who have shaped its work, and look forward to the continuing flourishing of neighborhoods led by the power of resident voices. Now therefore, on behalf of the 56th City Commission and David F. Anderson, Mayor, I do hereby recognize and honor Building Blocks of Kalamazoo on its 30th anniversary and express sincere gratitude for its outstanding service, vision, and enduring contributions to the neighborhoods and residents of Kalamazoo. Congratulations and happy anniversary.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, and members of the commission. On behalf of Building Blocks, I want to thank you again to the city of Kalamazoo for honoring our 30 years of work. Of course, in addition to our founder, Kim Cummings, this recognition really belongs to the neighbors and volunteers, partners and supporters who have made Building Blocks what it is today. So to the Kalamazoo community, I wish I could turn around. I mean, I like you guys, but I would rather be saying. We are deeply grateful for your trust, your energy, your vision, and your leadership. Thank you for walking with us, guiding our evolution, and continuing to invest in our collective future. We look forward to another 30 years together. I want to also take a moment to shout out my amazing staff. I have Jonah Bolton and Erica Brown and Emily Whitman with me today. Thank you all.
Just thanks so much, Building Blocks team. This is something that is near and dear to my heart. Longtime friend of Kim Cummings, who started Building Blocks, and as a licensed builder and former union mason, one of my very early participations in Building Blocks was laying a masonry block wall to replace a fallen-over masonry block wall in front of someone's house on Blake Slate. So anyway, I appreciate the work and the effort that goes into it. It makes a big difference. Commissioners, now is the opportunity for adoption of the formal agenda. Are there any items on G, the consent agenda, you would like to have moved to H, the regular agenda? Seeing none, the agenda stands as it is. Communications, COO Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. A few updates for tonight. Fall leaf collection is underway. Just as a reminder, we ask everyone to put their leaves at the curb, clear of landscaping, utility pools, storm drains, mailboxes, to try to make it as easy as possible. There is great information on our website. If you go to our website/leaves, you'll be able to see kind of where things are at with the schedule. I also want to just remind everybody that our hard-working leaf crews are also our hard-working snowplow crews. And so we do know that when winter rears its head before we're ready, sometimes that can cause delays. And so we just ask for patience and just know that our teams are out there working as hard as they can to clear leaves despite whatever weather throws our way. Also, we've got some community open houses that are happening regarding some upcoming street safety projects. There was one actually this evening, another one in Edison on December 2nd. This is to really talk about the planning, the improvements for Cork Street, Lover's Lane, and Portage Streets. This is an opportunity to attend an open house, to be able to understand what's being proposed, to have staff answer questions, and just get more information about the projects. Again, that next meeting will be Tuesday, December 2nd, 5 to 7, and there's more information on our website on that as well. And lastly, we have a food drive underway. City staff kind of came together and really wanted to solicit donations, knowing how much we have communities in need. So we've got some cans, we've got some bins that are brimming to the top in our atrium. This is going to run through November 20th, so Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. People are welcome to bring cans here, and this is to benefit Kalamazoo Loaves and Fishes. Want to thank Kalamazoo Loaves and Fishes for everything that they are doing right now. They always do incredible work, but I know right now is a very difficult time, and I'm so grateful to have them as a partner in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, COO Lamb. Clerk Borley, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. In your packet, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, is a clerk's report that includes as an informational item a resolution that my office received that is a proposal for commission action. It's a resolution that would direct staff to initiate the acquisition of property at 4301 Stadium Drive for conservation purposes. That's there for information. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Clerk Borley. Any questions for the clerk at this time? All right, thank you so much. Now is the opportunity for public comments. Just a reminder that this is not an opportunity for dialogue, but it's time for you to take advantage of expressing your thoughts on any topic that's appropriate here for our public media and for this commission. You have four minutes. Please state your name and whether you live in the city. Anyone who wants to take advantage of the public comment period. Yes, please come forward. You can sign in afterwards, that's fine.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Drew Duncan. I am a City of Kalamazoo resident. I live at 604 Douglas Avenue in the Stewart neighborhood, actually right behind Mr. Mayor. The reason why I'm here today is to reintroduce myself to the community. I was born here in Kalamazoo 36 years ago, right downtown at Bronson Hospital. I receive a lot of phone calls and emails, text messages, congratulatory cards, and I am not the Vice Mayor of the city. I am, I'm not. I am, however, the construction manager for Community Homeworks under Commissioner Prado's leadership. I am the former building inspector for the city of Kalamazoo. I was formerly Commissioner Slaby's coworker, peer. I have been a housing champion for the city of Kalamazoo for 10 years. I've repaired upwards 5,000 homes. I have a very now common name in the city. I, it's been made very clear that there has been some confusion surrounding the election and the name Drew Duncan. I just wanted to come here to clear it up. I'm not totally sure if all of Drew Duncan's votes went to Drew Duncan, and that's not to take away from his campaign or anything. I just want to make that very clear that we are two different people. So if, if people voted for me, thank you. I, moving forward, I would like it if people definitely knew that two Drews exist in the city. Drew Duncan seems to be very passionate about the city he now belongs to, and I will continue to do the work that I've been doing. So if two Drew Duncans show up at your door, then we're different people. This is the first time we've shared a space. Nice to meet you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next, please.
Good evening to Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Duncan, to all of the city commissioners, new and also continuing, returning, and also to city staff. My name is Charlay Davis, and I do work with Isaac, and I am energized to stand before you this evening. As a new commission, I want to ask you all to think about what Dr. King said about the beloved community. He said, "The beloved community is an inclusive, democratic reality. While not devoid of conflict, it is free of violence. It's a place where our deepest values of abundance, equity, community, hope, and most of all, love are infused into our policies and our practices so that every person is held as beloved." Now, this sounds good, it's easy to say, it feels good to say, but building the beloved community, as you already know, is not always easy. Dr. King spoke with a centered, a human, people-centered lens, and with the understanding that some are not valued in our community. Now, I was born and raised in Kalamazoo. I love Kalamazoo, but I have to engage in truth-telling and say that not all in Kalamazoo, not all of our community members are held as beloved, not yet. That's where we need to get. Building the beloved community means that truth-telling, it means being uncomfortable at times, it means knowing that conflict can bring change, it means standing alone sometimes, and it also means addressing systemic harm. Now, as we enter the harsh winter months and into 2026 of unknowns, may we remain equity-focused and human-focused. I want to remind you that you have a vocal, wonderful community standing with you all, people who love our community, they want to center humanity, equity, anti-racism in our practices and policies, just as you all do. And when it is hard, when it is uncomfortable, just know that we are here to support you in this collective work so that each and every person in Kalamazoo is held as beloved. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Bergman at 2503 Shipper's Lane. I'm a community organizer in Kalamazoo. I'm here tonight in support of funding for increased winter shelter capacity for ministry with community, because I know what it means to be homeless here in Kalamazoo. I felt what it's like to depend on the Gospel Mission for shelter. I understand the cost when they turn people away. I watched them refuse entry to another young mother with an infant in the middle of the night. I've seen how quickly they claw back aid to those who find their program guidelines oppressive or their leadership offensive. It's been more than a decade since I escaped the life where I had to choose between keeping my baby safe and following their rules to stay warm. But even if their leadership and policies were perfect, the needs of the unhoused exceeds the Gospel Mission's capacity. People are being left out in the cold. I see it every morning as I drive past to take my son to school. People are sleeping on the freezing hard ground. We have kids being discharged from foster care without a safety net who end up on the streets. I was one of them. We have people who become disabled through no fault of their own, who can barely fend for themselves. I've heard their stories. It could happen to any one of us. We cannot abandon the most vulnerable in our community. Your decision here tonight could make the difference between a person surviving or freezing to death. The hard truth is that even with the new leadership at the Gospel Mission, they can't meet the demands on their own. I'm asking you to cast the vote that gives our unhoused neighbors assurance that they will be safe and warm this winter. I thank you in advance for your grace and care and governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next, please.
Robert Pelish, 2228 Springmont Avenue, Kalamazoo. And I'm here tonight to support the resolution that is in your packet. And I'm here tonight to support the resolution that is in your packet. We've talked a few times about the idea of buying the Stadium Drive buffer zone to Asylum Lake Preserve through establishment of a 501-3C nonprofit and then making capital campaign to, my, my plan would be to give the present owner what he paid for it and give him the opportunity to walk away and do his civic duty. How much he wants for it is another thing. I think the city's got a lot of weight to be able to go in and just say, "We're going to give you what you paid for it." We have 13, maybe 14,000 people on our petition to try to save that green space. Today, there was 200 more on a new petition, asking the City Commission to go with this resolution. I first heard of this resolution, I thought, "What a great idea. We're buying McDonald's for $9 million, just a little pot, patch of land." So what, to Kalamazoo City, what's 2.5 or even less, maybe market value, to do what overwhelming support of the City of Kalamazoo has come forward many, many times? 2023, 2020, now 2025? I mean, some of us are getting old. We can't keep doing this for the next 35 years. I'm probably not going to be here anymore. But you have an opportunity to make your legacy that Kalamazoo stood up against urban blight, paving paradise to put up a parking lot, and protected the whole of Asylum Lake and its surrounding area, like Central Park in New York. I mean, all you got to do is drive down West Main or Oakland Drive or White's Road, anywhere around Kalamazoo, you can see massive deforestation. West Main, all kinds of forests are being cut down to make new properties. You know, in 50 years, it's going to be malls and housing all the way to Lake Michigan. You have an opportunity to protect our little Walden Pond in Kalamazoo. So write off 2.5 or whatever it takes and buy that property and put us all out of our misery. Like, you know, how many more years do we have to come up and talk to you guys? I mean, I've talked to David myself a few times and, and, you know, I know there's alpa, there's ecologists, there's birds and bee people. I think it's what the city wants, and you're the employees of the city, and we're asking you to do the right thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, everyone again. Welcome, new Commissioners. It's good to see some new faces on this board. Thank you. My concern is, I live on Lake Street. My name is Tina McClintock. I live at 310 Lake. I live next door to our last remaining green space in the whole neighborhood. Same neighborhood where you want to build a man-made green space with a water retention pond. There's a lot of children that live around that neighborhood. There's a lot of animals. There's a lot of wildlife. Retention ponds cause a lot of insects. We don't need any more water added to our area. That is our problem, is the water. Your storm drains, your storm drains do not work in my neighborhood. So why would you build a green space a block down the street from the same green space that you want to destroy? The same green space that has a natural watershed, wetlands, over 100 mature trees. It's been on the city's destruction list for eight years. I've been coming here for eight years. So tell me, why would you destroy our last real natural green space that absorbs a lot of water and has a lot of endangered species in it? My last natural green space is Lake to Stott Ridge to John. It saves our home from flooding. If you destroy it, you will cause severe flooding in our neighborhood and make it worse than we already have. When your storm drains overflow after an inch of rain, one inch, what other neighborhood does that? None of them, just my neighborhood. I've been coming here eight long years, at every single city commission meeting, asking the same thing over and over again. Will you please fix your storm drains? Your storm drains come up and flood the streets out when there's no ponds around it. There's no water. There's no stream. Why are they coming up flooding out the streets? I, I don't understand. That's why I've been coming here for eight years, asking you to spend the money this time, fix this problem once and for all. You waste a lot of money on these common traffic projects, which is a joke because it causes more traffic backup, causes more pollution, cars setting iota every night, two to three times. It's nothing new. When a climate change, a severe climate change, flooding is getting worse, and it's going to be so bad that it's going to, it's going to end up killing somebody someday if it's never fixed. Like Riverview Drive, somebody drove through and drowned. People have died in the floodwater in Kalamazoo. It's time to fix it. And bring back public call-ins. Why can't we call in? There's some people that can't make it here. There's disability. There's people, I've seen an older couple come one time, they could barely walk, but they come up and they spoke about the X train in their neighborhood. All they would have had to do was make a phone call. If you bring back public comments, call-ins at public meetings, this is something that's very important. If you really want to hear from the residents of Kalamazoo, and you really do love Kalamazoo, and you really do care about Kalamazoo, and you care about the residents, you would bring back public call-ins so people can call in that can't make it here. I worked two jobs, and I've still managed to make it here for eight years. All I want you to do is fix your storm drains. I want you to leave my words alone. Fix your storm drains. Stop the flooding once and for all. Stop building in a flood plain. You're just making it worse for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Heaven Simpson. I am a community consultant with the Kalamazoo County Continuum of Care, and I'm also a member of the Grant Review Committee. I want to begin by thanking you for your time and for your willingness to work with us on the winter shelter program, or the winter shelter. I'm here tonight because winter sheltering in Kalamazoo County is not just a service, it's a lifeline. When the temperature drops, the stakes rise. For many of our neighbors, winter isn't just a season, it's a threat. A simple lack of shelter can become the difference between a safety and suffering, hope and despair, sometimes even life and death. This year, that reality hit my family in a way that I'll never forget. I recently lost my uncle to suicide here in town. The cold was beginning to settle in, and he had nowhere to go, nowhere he felt safe, nowhere he could simply exist without the fear of freezing or become, being turned away. That loneliness, that hopelessness, that absence of warmth, warmth, of a warm place, it matters, and it cost us someone that we loved. I share this not to cast blame, but to remind all of us that every decision made in this room touches real people with real families. When we talk about winter sheltering, we are talking about someone's father, someone's daughter, someone's uncle, someone who deserves another chance to stay alive long enough to heal. Winter sheltering saves lives. It gives people stability when everything else is slipping away. It gets, it gives families hope, and it gives our community the chance to act with compassion, dignity, and responsibility. We are asking not for the impossible, but for support, resources, and commitment needed to ensure that no one in Kalamazoo County has to face the cold alone. Thank you again for your time, your service, and your willingness to hear us. We truly appreciate, appreciate the work that you do. We look forward to what comes next together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Thank you for your comment. My name is Iris Potter. I live at 1204 Manor Street, and I'll be commenting on a couple things. But first, as a board member for Dignity in Motion and a volunteer for Kalamazoo Together for the Unhoused, I want to thank you for your support this past winter and for your continuing support this year for sheltering. You have helped save lives, and you also see the urgency to support hotel sheltering for our medically fragile community members. WMed's Street Medicine Program of Kalamazoo has identified approximately 220 individuals who are patients of theirs who are medically fragile living on the streets. This doesn't include people who are not their patients. The need is great, and I know you know that. There is overwhelming community support for our hotel projects. The dedicated community volunteers who help are truly amazing, and they think, and I want to thank each of them. All of our paid shelter employee staff are individuals who are currently unhoused, recently unhoused, and/or in recovery from substance abuse disorders. Our success this past winter included zero property damage at hotels, zero fights, zero police calls, and zero overdoses. But the most important thing that we were able to do was to give a warm bed, food, support, and save lives for many vulnerable members of our community. So with your support tonight, we will continue to do that. It's on your agenda, and I know you, you will continue that. So I must also take the opportunity to support the resolution on your agenda for information, requesting that the city consider the purchase of 4301 Stadium Drive property for conservation purposes, including the option of eminent domain. I know we can do this. I know that we need to support and preserve our preserve. Our community's beautiful Asylum Lake Preserve is Kalamazoo's treasure. I think we all know that. We go there, we love it, and it must never be threatened by commercial zoning. We are, have no obligation to do that. So I encourage you to put that resolution on your agenda for next time, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Shannon Dornpohl, and I'm here for the homeless upside. I've never done this before, I'm not much sure how to do this. Nice to meet you guys all. We are, I don't know where these people are getting their information, but it is not true. I'm outside of everybody. We're not getting no money. I don't understand, we're not getting, all that money was donated. We've gotten out of dime. They don't feed us. They don't give us nothing. The people that come on Sunday, it's donated out of their own pocket. We have somebody that comes on Thursday, they're a nonprofit organization, that they feed us, and they get it from the UMC, the college, that's where they get the money to donate, to feed us. There's one other guy, they feed tacos and pizza, and that comes out of their pocket. So I don't understand when they're thinking that we're being, we're not being housed while outside. That's the only reason we're all over, because they tore down Tent City, the police did, just plowed through it. Well, a lot of these people have been out here for years, they don't know, not to be rude, but they know nothing but that living. They weren't taught nothing. I mean, they were promoted to come here. People, I don't understand how, people don't know that, that people promoted people for homeless to come here? Does nobody know this, or what? They, yeah, they did. They promoted most of people. There's not no new ones coming, but everybody that's already been here? I mean, you're just going to, what, just kill them off? What, I don't understand. That's all you could do because they don't know nothing. They know nothing. That's why they're sitting out there doing drugs, and, because that's all they know, that's all they did in Tent City. But why would you separate them all? That's why they're all over town, because you kicked them out. Police just went in there, knocked the tents down and whatever, abused them, whatever, and sent them out to where they're at right now. They don't have, that's why they're spread all over. It seemed like they had one area, and there's only 33 going in the mission, 32 women. They stopped it, they have a program that's going on. There's 33 people that go in there, that's it, women's. And then when one messes up, you're on a waiting list, and one more can go in. So I don't understand how the mission's doing anything anymore anyways. Can I ask where you guys get all your information? Because I'm outside with all of these people, and nobody's being housed, know nothing. The people that are feeding us, which barely, I know it sounds a responsibility, but at least since they've been doing it all this time, it's kind of like, you know, they depend on it. Teach them something. Don't just, whatever they're doing with, you know what I mean? That's why they're sitting where they're at, they don't know nothing but to do drugs and sit there. They wheel and deal, whatever, hustle and do drugs, that's all they know. They know nothing else, because that's all they've done for years in this Tent City that's, that they had. I don't know, do you guys know that, over by the bridge, over behind Checkers? You're all just looking at me like nobody's saying nothing? Do you know what Tent City was? Huh? Anybody? You don't do, it was for a bunch of homeless people. They were all packed in there, and that's all they did was, and do drugs, that's it. They know nothing else. They just, and then one day, the cops just surprised me, went in there, kicked them all out, cleaned it all up, and now they're all out where everybody's, you know, don't want them. I understand that, but you can't just, they promoted these people to come here, I don't know why, maybe because of the mission or something, I'm not positive why. But they need to be taught something. I mean, it's not, it is kind of the responsibility, if they brought them here and they let them stay there all this time, it is kind of the responsibility to help them out, not just kick them to the curb, you know what I mean? Well, that's, and it's nasty out there. I have to admit, this is the grossest thing I've ever seen, I don't know how these people live, how they're living anywhere. It is repulsive, I do admit that, and I am homeless myself, but we're being treated like crap. Besides, I do understand that, but we need help. I'm asking, we don't get a dime, I don't, billions of dollars supposedly been donated to the homeless. We've gotten not a dime of this money in three years. Maybe one or two's been housed, but nothing, I swear, they, we got nothing. I mean, the town ain't that big to know if somebody's going to be, or, we all know about it, because we're going to go, you know what I mean? It's not your responsibility, I understand that, but they need to be taught something or, I don't know how else to do it. You can't just, they're people, like she said, they're, so there's somebody's mother, there's somebody's aunt, there's somebody, they're a human.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Duncan, and congratulations on the new commission. My name's Michelle Davis. I'm the Executive Director at Housing Resources. I'm here to thank you for the agreement that you're about to approve for winter shelter. I also want to share the realities of the winter shelter program that's going to be proposed. The request for proposal that was released was a partnership with Kalamazoo County, the City of Kalamazoo, and the Continuum of Care. It called for 160 winter shelter beds and 24-hour, seven coverage for shelter access, including holidays and weekends. What was funded was 65% of the beds that went out in the RFP and one day shift of shelter access through business hours, Monday through Friday. The realities of what will happen is those shelter beds will fill immediately. People can keep that shelter bed until they don't show. They will be full. People will continue to call every day and be told that there aren't any, and there will not be access overnight and on weekends unless the shelters themselves allow people in, which they may. I thank you for your commitment. This is the first time in a while there's been a formalized plan for winter shelter. We are one month late in getting this approved, and I ask you to please find some additional funds for the need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson and members of the commission. I'm Andrea Trammell. I am the Development Director at Ministry with Community. I'm here tonight, first off, thank you. Thank you for your continued support of the work we get to do here in the 47 years' history of Ministry with Community, and that is to be Kalamazoo's only permanent daytime shelter. Tonight, you folks get to vote on an opportunity for Ministry with Community to become an overnight temporary shelter during the winter months. And I have to tell you, it's an undertaking, but we are able, willing, and want to step up to serve the citizens of Kalamazoo with 80 beds, and we can do it, and we can do it at the premier level that we do our folks here. So I really just want to say thank you, and it's cold out there. And before I came to this meeting tonight, I stepped over a resident on my door outside of my building as she was smuggling in for the night, and I said, "Please stay warm," as she had a million blankets over her. So I just want to take a moment and think of her and hope she stays warm tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi there. Welcome to new commissioner members of
Hi there, welcome to new commissioner members as well. I echo support for previous speakers on some serious issues, this feels, kind of pales in comparison in some ways, but I'd like to raise a broader issue, concern about the city's public participation policy and how it's applied in staff reports, using the report for the recent rezoning request at Stadium and Drake as a case study. The participation policy requires a summary of outreach of activities. In practice, this requirement is being fulfilled in reports, but in the narrowest way possible, I believe. For example, the most recent commission report simply notes that the applicant held a neighborhood meeting with roughly 50 attendees, but it does not convey what occurred in those 90 minutes. This matters especially when applied to high-profile cases where community members are at their most vocal. Most notable examples of public participation that didn't make the report, or more notable examples, rather, record attendance and public comments at the 2020 meeting on the same site. Again, that meeting went till near midnight, as I recall. A 14,000-plus signature petition in multiple ALPA-hosted forums. Some of these examples aren't city-approved public participation requirements, but surely they warrant some acknowledgement in a staff report that commission members rely on to make educated decisions. And so the recent Public Planning Commission staff report reduces years of public engagement to single sentences, that meetings were held and attended. There's no reflection of what people actually said, no acknowledgement of the depth of concern, and no indication of whether any input shaped the actual proposal as it moved forward. For example, the Reports section on community need makes no reference to the overwhelming public feedback that explicitly rejects the public need for this rezoning. I was at the recent meeting at Anna Witten Hall, and the public spent much of their time about the distinct lack of community need for this rezoning. The report suggests that community need was independently defined of the community itself. I think that actual data should inform these determinations and be reflected in the reports. I don't think these are minor oversights, and I think they spill over into other serious issues outside of environmental concerns. When a staff report checks the outreach box without reporting the content of public input, the public participation policy becomes a procedural tool, not a meaningful one. The policy ends up masking rather than reflecting the public's voice, and I think that really happened in this recent staff report. I urge the city to strengthen the standards for what qualifies as a summary, quote, summary of outreach activities. Going forward, staff reports should include the substance of public feedback, not just the outreach that occurred, so decision-makers and community members can see how public input is informing proposals when they come to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Duncan, Commissioner Hoffman, Commissioner Slavie. I just wanted to come and thank, or give my congratulations to you for your reelection and for you for raising your hand to serve. My name is Vic Leveder, I'm a Portage City Councilman. I too want reelection, I guess, tomorrow, but I just wanted to come by and just say congratulations, and I look forward to working with you, and anything I can do to help, please reach out to me. But again, the city is in good hands and going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jane Gosch, Kalamazoo, the Convention and Visitors Bureau for Kalamazoo County. I too want to welcome the new Vice Mayor and new Commissioner, and I look forward to working with you on everything that we do to help make this city of Kalamazoo a great place to live, work, and play. And on that note, I have a few messages to deliver. The first is extreme gratitude to the staff of the City of Kalamazoo for everything that they're doing to help us be successful in the development of the indoor youth and amateur sports facility. Many people on the City of Kalamazoo's staff have sat with the development team to make sure that we understand the right process, to make sure that we have the right input, that we do things the right way, and meet our aggressive timeline, and we could not ask for more professional and more helpful support than we're getting from the city staff, so we're deeply grateful. On a related note, Commissioner Hess serves on that authority board, and she has dedicated a great deal of time and commitment and passion to helping the project be successful, and we very much appreciate that. Two other pieces of information I wanted to pass along. Starting in the spring of 2026, the Gilmore International Piano Festival will become an annual event. So up until now, it's been a biannual event. Starting in 2026, it will be annual. For those of you, viewers who might not be familiar, the NPR called the Gilmore International Piano Festival, "The Greatest Gathering of Piano Talent in the Western Hemisphere." It is a phenomenal event that brings people from around the world to our fine city. In 2026, the festival is from April 30th until May 10th, that's the beginning of the annual event, and this Wednesday is the preview event, and for donors, tickets go on sale starting on November 19th, and for non-donors, for the general public, tickets are available in January for this event, and they do have events that sell out, but the headlines will be revealed on Wednesday, November 19th. And then lastly, I wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that the Kalamazoo Holiday Parade is this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. downtown, so Saturday, November 22nd, 11:00 a.m. downtown. That is an event that brings people from around the county and beyond, because it's the kickoff of holiday celebrations here in Kalamazoo County. I look forward to seeing many of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next, please.
Hello, Kay, again. Just wanted to give a little background of when I started coming here. I started coming here in 2021 after the Amber Sea Evictions, and a homeless community member had mentioned Amber Sea, Tent City is what it was called. Those were heartless evictions, and when I hear the word compassion and compassionate used, it just really makes my stomach turn, because it is about to get cold, and I hope that there's no pushback from this commission with giving funds for the overnight shelter. That's something monumental, I'm happy to see all the different organizations coming together to make this happen, and, you know, it does take a community effort. You know, there's still just a lot of issues in Kalamazoo with homelessness, with the flooding, you know? People come here and say their stories, and I'm hopeful that it's going, that you all are listening and are going to act on this. Another thing that is happening is that MDOT is, has new proposed administrative rules for their facilities, and so we need to talk about the real reason people experience homelessness. It's not about individual failure, as was highlighted at the Kalamazoo, at this commission September 2023. This is a systemic issue. Our housing, healthcare, and education systems have created this crisis with a disproportionate impact on communities of color. Right now, the new MDOT rules are making a bad situation, situation worse. These rules treat necessary acts of survival as a crime. The facilities these rules cover, like rest areas, are designated for people passing through, but for our neighbors with nowhere else to go, they're the last resort for safety. The current approach is not only ineffective, it's inhumane. It creates a four-hour parking limit, which means that people living in their cars are not going to have a stable place to sleep, and it creates a time cycle of moving around. The benefit of camping implies that this is a recreational choice instead of a life-sustaining activity. It makes just homelessness a crime. It prohibits people from messing inside the facilities, and it talks about, creates like, as if they were an inconvenience, when they're simply trying to be warm. This is happening more whenever, as people are struggling to get by. We have a large population known as the ALIS community, that's asset-limited income-constrained unemployed. People who have jobs but still can't afford basic necessities, and the data in Kalamazoo is stark. 63% of black households, 47 Hispanic, and 30 of white households, for example, are below the ALIS threshold. This means that families are a crisis away from housing instability and homelessness. 1,396 children in our school district are identified as homeless. When we punish people for trying to survive by giving them tickets, that creates a criminal record, it's harder for people to get services. I urge all of you to go to the MDOT website and look for the proposed rules for their facilities and make a public comment, and as well as approve, approve the funds for this. This is really good for the community. You know, right now, people are about to lose limbs, extremities, and their lives, because there's not enough beds, and it's a crisis in Kalamazoo, and it definitely needs to be humanized, and I'm happy to see the organizations that came and put a human perspective on this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to take advantage of this public comment, period? Well, thank you once again to everyone that took the time and made the effort to come here and provide public comments for this meeting. Next is the Consent Agenda, COO Lamb.
Thank you. Item one, approval of a 63-month copier and printer maintenance cooperative contract with DL Galivan through the Association of Educational Purchasing Agencies, contract in the amount of $128,770.74. Approval of a 63-month cooperative contract with Wells Fargo through the Association of Educational Purchasing Agencies contract for the lease of new copiers and printers in the amount of $202,382.46. Three, adoption of a resolution certifying the project area designation, establishing the project district area boundaries, appointing additional directors to the Economic Development Corporation Board, and scheduling a public hearing on December 15th for the Friendship Village of Kalamazoo project. Four, adoption of a restated resolution approving an application for a commercial rehabilitation exemption at 261 East Kalamazoo Avenue. Five, adoption of a resolution setting a public hearing on December 15th, 2025, to consider the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget for the City of Kalamazoo. Six, approval of an amended lease agreement for 459 North Rose Street between the city and the Central County Transportation Authority. Approval of the mayor's appointments and reappointments to the local officers' compensation commission, the appointment of William Reed for a full term expiring March 31st, 2032, the appointment of Levi Weintraub for a full term expiring March 31st, 2032, the reappointment of Mark Little for a full term expiring March 31st, 2031, and the reappointment of Barbara Miller for a full term expiring March 31st, 2031. Lastly, eight, approval of a purchase agreement for the sale of 459 North Rose Street to Kalamazoo County for the sale price of $200,000. This will be postponed until December 1st for action.
Thank you very much, COO Lamb. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items one through seven, postpone item eight until December 1st, 2025, and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman, second, supported by Vice Mayor Duncan. Co-Bo, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Slavie.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, items on the consent agenda are approved. We're now at H, the regular agenda. Chief Operating Officer Lamb.
Item H1, approval of an agreement with United Way South Central Michigan Continuum of Care to support winter shelter services in the amount of $300,000.
Thank you, COO Lamb. Is there a staff report on this item?
We have Patrice Griffin, Executive Director for the Continuum of Care. She's here to provide a very brief overview, and as we heard during public comment, we also have representatives from Ministry with Community, HRI, and Dignity in Motion in attendance.
Thank you, and welcome to here, Patricia. Good to see you this evening.
Good to see you all. Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Duncan, and members of the commission. So I will share with you a little bit about this wonderful opportunity to provide temporary winter shelter for our community members. As you know, we have been dealing with this for many years, and while we don't have everything figured out, we are much closer than we have been, and so a joint proposal was created between the City of Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo County, and the Kalamazoo County Continuum of Care. The total request for proposals was $700,000, and we're here to request your support of your portion, which is $300,000. The request for proposals went out, the grants were, can you all hear me? I feel like it's, so, the proposals were received, they were approved or reviewed, if you will, by the Grants Review Committee. The Grants Review Committee is made up of members of our community consultants, which one of you heard, you heard from one of them today. They are individuals with lived experience of homelessness in our community who paid to help lead and guide the work of the Continuum of Care. So they made their approvals and moved those up to the Continuum of Care Board, who made those final approvals. And so you heard from Housing Resources, Inc., who was approved to do very much-needed shelter coordination. Ministry with Community will be providing both day and overnight shelter, and then you've got Dignity in Motion, who will be providing hotel beds for individuals who are medically vulnerable, who are not able to care for themselves, and if those individuals have pets, they will be allowed to stay there as well.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions for Patricia Griffin, the Director of the COC? This is Vice Mayor Duncan.
Ms. Griffin, it's good to see you, finally not ringing your phone. So we're, so the other $400,000, that has already been secured, or that's on the way?
Yes, and so the Kalamazoo County Commission made their approvals on the 21st of October. They are $396,750, and the Kalamazoo County Continuum of Care, we are supporting with $58,088, and that money is ready to be deployed. We are just waiting for this final approval.
Thank you for that thorough answer and your work in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, Patricia, for being here, and thank you for the work you've been leading at the COC. My question is not for you, my question is internal, and why are we now just getting this, this funding approved? I would be, I would hope that when we know that we're going to be contributing and it's going to be a partnership, that we can break down some of the barriers and get this approved internally at the city and at the county, and when the RFP goes out, those, those agreements can be executed immediately. So I'm hoping we can find a way internally to change the policy and how we're doing things to ensure that people are not out in the cold when this was supposed to be deployed November 1st. We are a month late, and that does not feel right, because we have the ability to be more effective and efficient in what we're doing for our most vulnerable. So I would like us to look at that internally.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Yes, Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Patricia, for your hard work. This is an awesome project, and I'm excited to give my approval today. I believe it was stated earlier today that, in the public comments, that this RFP covers 65% of the beds that we were hoping for, is that the case?
That is the case. So we were looking at numbers based on point-in-time count data. We know that changes were made at Kalamazoo Gospel Mission, right, to make sure there was safety and security with their staff and people that they serve, and so that number was a baseline that was created. We recognize that we did not meet that full baseline, but we are confident in the work, specifically with HRI and their ability to operate fully in that shelter coordination space. Although there are gaps with what they initially proposed, we're hoping that there will be movement, right, and the goal is to get people into permanent housing. Now, I recognize we won't have all of those units that we need created by the time that, you know, all this is happening, but for as best as we possibly can, we'll make sure that there's movement to get people into more transitional or more permanent stability.
And I was going to ask as a follow-up, to cover that gap, is it just a matter of some gap funding that needs to be addressed, or are there other factors that go into getting that from 65% to maybe closer to 100?
It's money.
Thank you.
Other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Hess.
Hi, Patricia, thank you for being here, and thank you for all your work on this, and thank you to HRI and Ministry with Community and all who work with, with the homeless community. There was, there was information about the medically infirm, and thank you for that. Thank you to Judy and her folks for, for providing that sheltering. Can you clarify that, so if they have pets, the pets can be with, or the pets will be taken care of while? care of while the people are being sheltered? Can you kind of talk about that a little bit?
That's a great question. The pets will be able to stay in hotel in the unit with the individuals.
You all set, Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Pradel.
I had the urge to say hello, Vice Mayor. You were the first Vice Mayor I worked with. Thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for all your work of you and your team and the partner organizations as well. I was wondering, and maybe this would be better with Michelle as well, but just explaining a little bit more about what the shelter coordination entails and why that's important to this equation as well for this work this winter.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm happy to speak, but I'm also would be happy to have Michelle come up and speak to that amazing work. So just clearly, shelter coordination is something that's been identified by the Continuum of Care as a need for several years. Coordination is something that our community, it does have, but it needs more of, it needs to be more increased. It, coordination allows for those individuals at Dignity in Motion, at Ministry of Community, to serve the individuals. And that coordination outside of that makes sure individuals are in their beds, that beds are being reserved, and that there's general movement, that they are able to receive other supports and services in their role as the HARA or Housing Assessment Resource Agency. So it is, it's extremely important that we have this component. I do just want to acknowledge what Michelle lifted up around those gaps, but I do want to honor the work that the three agencies, as well as other shelters, are going to be working in a collaborative way to make sure that all of our community members, for as much as we can, are not left out.
Thank you. Another question as well. So I heard somebody mention prior that, yeah, they really appreciated that this is as proactive as it's been in recent history, maybe forever, right? We're not responding because there's a polar vortex happening tomorrow. You know, we're responding, hopefully getting ahead before there's, you know, really, really dire life and death situations. My question for you, and maybe you're not ready for this answer, but I always like to think about, you know, we want to celebrate the wins, but we also want to reflect on, you know, learning so far. What, what would you say you've learned so far about this process of doing it proactively and something that we can look at to, you know, be even better prepared and ready for next year?
Yeah, well, I definitely want to double down on the collaboration that's happening between the city and the county, those municipalities and the Continuum of Care. In addition to serving Kalamazoo County, I'm also the Director in Calhoun County and so, and also serving in other statewide capacities, I'm able to see just how this doesn't happen, right? How much it, it does not take place. We are further along than other communities are and, and that's a beautiful thing. And also, right, we have more work that we need to do. So the beautiful thing is that we're all at the table together. It's going to be difficult, to your point, we are further than we have been. I do want to acknowledge that we hope to have this started, well, we don't hope. It will be, once you all approve, we will start this December 1st. I do want to acknowledge, you know, there have been lives lost and, and we will not have those lives be lost in vain because we will do what we need to do to make sure it's better for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Slaby.
Hi, Patrice. It's really exciting to also know that you guys are working on a five-year strategic plan, so I look forward to learning more about that, to provide additional coordination and vision around being able to address this issue within our community. I'm curious to talk about, this is a temporary winter shelter. As we know, Michigan's weather can be unpredictable and winter conditions can be prolonged. And so with this planning to be started in December 1st, how long do you think this is going to be in operation for those that are seeking refuge there? And do you have a contingency within your budget for any unanticipated cost that may come up with having to extend the shelter?
So that's an excellent question. The one thing that we are doing new this year that hasn't previously taken place is we're able to operate shelter from December 1 through the end of March. So that is huge. Instead of just being reactive to the weather that we know we're going to have, we do anticipate all of the beds being filled quite quickly and we will do the best that we can. And to be very frank, the $700,000 that has been awarded in this will all be, you know, it will all be dispensed to the agency so they can get the work done. There may be additional supports that are needed and so we may be looking to you all, we may be looking to the county and looking internally on ways that we can collaborate.
Any other questions for Director Griffin? Thank you so much for being here. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Since there are no more questions, there, this is time for anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this item, send them H1. If so, please come to the podiums, give us your name, and whether you live in the city, you will have three minutes for your comments. And I recognize the fact that many people did take advantage to comment during the public comment period as well.
Hi, one quick thing. The shelter that is proposed is for single adults and medically fragile. There are not winter shelter beds for families and that's a very important point to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers that would like to comment on this item? Seen no one, then commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman, second, and second by Vice Mayor Duncan. Any discussion, commissioners? Commissioner Hess.
Yeah. Question for COO Lamb. If there's not a family shelter available through this program, can you comment somewhat on the family shelter program that's, that is happening with, out on Kalamazoo Road?
So certainly, as Director Griffin mentioned, we've got a strong partnership happening between Kalamazoo County Continuum of Care, City of Kalamazoo.
That is operated by Kalamazoo Gospel Ministries. Last I understood, they were completely full, so there's that option. Just another recognition is there is a family shelter that is operated by the YWCA that is specifically for families. There are also family resources, there's a family shelter at Integrated Services of Kalamazoo, which is a family resource. So there are broader community resources that are available, not necessarily saying they're sufficient, but the, the landing is not the only opportunity that's available. Other questions, commissioners? You all set for this? Then Clerk Bowlin, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Slaby.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Next is item H2.
Item H2, approval of an interim employment agreement with Patsy Amor for the position of city manager.
Thank you so very much, COO Lamb. I presume there's not a staff report on this item.
There is not, but Attorney Liel is available if there's any questions of the Commission.
All right, thank you so much. Attorney Liel, any comments you would like to make? I'm happy to, to make some comments as well, whatever.
I'll defer to you, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. So Commissioner Liel, you know, did our internal work for us on this. Obviously, we're going to have a, the last day for our manager is tomorrow and the first day for our incoming city manager won't be till January 5th. So we are required to have a city manager as a consequence. We are going to, this is a contract for an interim city manager. And along those lines, I've had the pleasure and the opportunity to work for, I mean, work with Patsy Moore, who was in our city manager's office for quite some time, had a long career here at the city, very familiar with the responsibilities of the city manager's office. She was also someone who was very involved in creating budgets in the past. That was one of the lead roles that she had. So I did get in touch with Patsy Moore. Patsy, are you here? I don't see if you're still here. I know you were here earlier.
Yeah.
Okay, we're in the back there, right. And Patsy kindly agreed to fill in for this period of time. I think she's going to be doing a fantastic job as interim city manager, is going to hit the ground running, knows the job. And so thank you for agreeing to be available for this. And in order to make it official, this is the, what we'll be doing is approving of the employment agreement with Patsy Moore. Attorney Liel, you worked with, with Patsy in order to negotiate something that is acceptable to, to Patsy Moore as well as us. Any particular comments you feel you need to make about that?
That is correct, Mayor. We, I and CFO Steve Assensi negotiated with Ms. Moore to develop the contract that he's had before you. Just wanted to reiterate that she would technically, if approved, she would be starting on Wednesday, November 18th at 12:01 a.m. And, and there's a reason for, for that. And then she would be continued until Sunday, January 4th, 2026, and then on Monday, the 5th, the, our new city manager, Malcolm Henkens, would then start. So the, I've listed in the agenda report, the key terms to the agreement to make it very easy for everyone to understand what the key terms are, rather than having to dive into the agreement and find them, just for your convenience. And so from, from, you know, I, again, I had a very, very good experience in working with, with Ms. Moore and with that, I recommend this agreement for the city commission to approve.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Seen no questions, then now is the opportunity for anybody who is here in the chambers to comment on this item. If so, please come forward, state your name, and you'll, whether you live in the city, you'll have three minutes. Seen no one, the recommended action, commission is a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Duncan.
Duncan.
Supported by Commissioner Slaby. Discussion, commissioners? Commissioner Pradel.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Pradel. Really want to thank Patsy Moore for willing to step in, especially during the holiday season. This is somebody who is a veteran of, of City Hall, knows this place inside and out and, but has been removed for some period of time as well. So appreciate your willingness to come back and, and serve the community in this way during the interim. It means a lot to us and really appreciate it and grateful to have you back. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Other discussion, commissioners? I keep watching that hand on the mic there, but no, that doesn't mean it. All right. So I just want to say one thing. We are very blessed, I would say, to have such a great option available to us here to fill in this very critically important role. So thank you again, Patsy Moore, for being willing to do this and particularly with such enthusiasm. Thank you so very much. Clerk Bowlin, please call the roll.
Commissioner Slaby.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. Next, reports in legislation. Chief Operating Officer Lamb, do you have a report?
I did share most of my comments during communications. Just one clarification, during public comment, there was a reference to the acquisition of the McDonald's. It's actually Kalamazoo County that's doing the acquisition. I know it's very easy to get confused between city and county, just wanted to kind of clear that part up, that that is actually a Kalamazoo County project and that's it for me.
Thank you, COO Lamb. Clerk Bowlin, anything you need to share?
Not in addition to what I shared earlier.
Okay, thank you so much. So just as a reminder of what's happening tonight, we are now on a point of our agenda for Commissioner comments. And as a reminder of anyone that looks ahead, we do have a closed session on our agenda tonight. And when we go into closed session, there needs to be a motion for us to go into closed session. There are very particular topics that warrant and allow us to go into closed session. A reminder is that if we take action on something that's been discussed in closed session, that happens, that needs to happen in public session, so that action would not happen in a closed session. And if we're coming back to take action, we will go into closed session and come back. Attorney Liel, will we be coming back to take any action after this closed session?
No, sir.
We will not. So that means we'll, we'll basically be adjourned in the meeting and go into a closed session after Commissioner comments. Commissioners, anyone who wants to make a comment this evening? Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to say thank you to the community for allowing us to serve you once again and to my new commissioners, welcome. I look forward to working with you all. I am not opposed to, if we have to choke each other out in the streets to get some work done, we can make that happen. But truly, I appreciate and I'm so glad that we're here and I know we are going to be in great hands and we are in great hands. We have been. There's work to do. We've done a whole lot these last four years. Now we get a chance to do even more. So thank you all and I look forward to serving and serving with you all as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Other commissioners? Commissioner Slaby.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Thank you, Kalamazoo. As someone who served under the 54th and 55th Commissions here for the city of Kalamazoo as the neighborhood activator, I have the great pleasure now of serving on the 56th Commission, only five months since I, you know, served in community planning, economic development. I really look forward to serving this policy role. I'm excited to be back in this type of capacity as I previously served on the school board in Battle Creek for six years. So it's exciting to have knocked on so many doors during the campaign, directly connecting with each of you in the community to understand what's most important to you and your neighborhood and citywide and being able to carry that onto the commission, knowing that I'll be able to continue to represent your concerns and advocate for the best decision possible as a collective commission. What I campaigned on during these last few months is that I want to see Kalamazoo become the easiest place to move to, launch and start and plug in. And I think that applies to every single person that wants to call Kalamazoo home. And again, I'm enthusiastic about the work that's ahead of us with our new Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 Master Plan, our new city manager that will be joining us, and all of the exciting projects that will come before us for us to consider approval of. And I think that there's a lot of things that we can do differently so we can continue to reach more and more people, get them in here and participating and feel like they are heard in the feedback they provide us and feel like there's material impact on their day-to-day lives in a positive way for us to address their concerns and get everybody up out of poverty and thriving in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Slaby. Commissioner Wilson?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be quick. I just wanted to congratulate you all on your reelection and Commissioner Hoffman, OG, your reelection. I endorse all three of you because I love your energy and I'm excited that you're bringing that onto the commission and I'm very excited and happy to serve alongside you and get some good work done. So congratulations once again.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
I'll try to be quick, y'all. Erin, Chase, Melissa, Travis, Jess, Mari, Joe, Charday Chambers, and the neighbors in Kalamazoo. Again, I would be remiss if I did not take this time and thank you, all of you who stood in line, who bubbled me in, who cast your ballot, and those who maybe thought you were voting for the other Drew as well. I hope that I, I earn your vote. Drew, so sorry that you are being harassed. I'll do this on the record in good faith. My number is 574-323-0000. It's a real number, y'all. So please, position and posture your harassment or congratulations away from this gentleman. He's done a tremendous amount of work in the community, I'm finding out. I'm happy to share the name. I hope I wear it well. And then lastly, I want to use this platform before we close this tonight to say her name, Tammy Christie. That was our neighbor that froze in the cold last, last winter and who launched my campaign. I'm eternally grateful again to this community and for the people who saw the urgency of this moment. I thank you all, particularly Ms. Griffin and the people who have run before me. This, this victory, this, this win stands on the shoulders of those who have come before me and I, I do not forget that. I intend to work very hard to earn the votes that people gave to me and maybe didn't, but I want to be a Vice Mayor, I get to say that, and then a Commissioner that understands this moment that we are facing as a city. This can be a city that adopts the This can be a city that adopts the spirit of dignity and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Prado.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to welcome our new colleagues. Appreciate your willingness to run and serve. Want to congratulate my colleagues who are returning. It continues to be an honor to serve with both of you, Commissioner Hoffman and Mayor Anderson. You know, this is one of the things, I remember back six years ago, being in your particular shoes, but you have, you realize when you put your arm up there and you're taking your oath, you have no idea what is going to happen in the next four years. You, absolute highs, absolute lows. The one reality is, is that regardless of what happens, it's going to be the seven of us in this seat figuring out how to get through it together. I look forward to working with both of you, as I have with everyone else, because I love this city and I love people who love this city. And I love anybody who's willing to work hard for the people who love and live in this city. And so I think we're going to all fit in pretty well, irregardless if we might have disagreements or we completely agree on things sometimes, because I think you've got seven people up here who really want to see us grow and thrive as a community. Wanted to make sure, just somebody mentioned earlier about how Public Services is duly working right now to plow and do leaves, but you know, they also do the holiday lights. I mean, these folks are working really, really hard right now to balance all these different things that are all happening simultaneously to help our community. And so I just really want to give a shout out to those folks who are working their tails off. The other thing too is, our budget's about to come out as a draft, and there's a real hardworking team with Steve Fasensee and his team and the team in leadership here who are working really hard to button that up. But simultaneously, while Steve and his team have been doing that, they are transitioning to a whole new system to manage their work. And also, we're heavily involved with the city manager contract, involved with interim city manager contracts. So really, Steve, want to make sure that your team knows and hears how much we appreciate you and all your work to get us doing that as well. Wanted to lift up an idea I heard tonight from Jeff, who's here tonight, but that was a really good idea worth lifting up. The idea was, is just that in the past, there have been mechanisms where during our meetings, we use the meetings to acknowledge any of the boards and commission seats that are open. I thought that was a really good idea. And I don't know if that looks like having a part of the agenda where we just read off of, you know, there's five vacancies and which boards they are and where you can serve, or even just like including it in the consent agenda or whatnot. But I just thought that was a really good idea because I know that's something that we've sometimes struggled with filling those seats. And that might be a great way to make sure that people who are tuning in or are interested in plugging in have the chance to hear right away with that. The other thing too is, Tom was here tonight, talked about just that public participation plan work as well. And I think it was a really valid point because in this particular instance that you're talking about with that plan, you have an issue where it's very one-sided, what you're hearing from public input. A lot of times, you might have a situation where you have like a traffic calming project where you have maybe a even divide or maybe a two-thirds, one-third split of how people feel on things. But in those types of situations, to your point, I think it'd be really valuable to maybe use technology. I mean, we could use AI. You look at Zoom where it can transcribe whole meeting comments and whatnot. Maybe there's ways where we could be utilizing technology in those kind of forum settings to have it automatically aggregate and collect what is being said and summarize what's happening. We saw that happen with the city manager search and with the public comment. The summary for that and summarizing what was heard in that summary report was using AI technology. So, I think there might be ways where we could look at that and try to improve that process, but I thought that's worth noting. I also want to acknowledge and note that there have been instances with that public participation plan when there are instances where there's divided input, where they have provided that. But I think, again, you know, this one example you gave is an example of where we could potentially do something different or a little bit better. So thank you for sharing that. Anyways, thank you. Have a good night.
Commissioner Hess.
Sure. I too would like to welcome our new colleagues. Welcome, and it'll be a pleasure serving among you for at least two more years. Appreciate your being here. Winston Churchill said, "To improve is to change and to be perfect is to change often." So we pretty much change every two years. So, I wanted to say we're pretty perfect up here. Kidding. So we do, we work to try and be perfect on behalf of the people of Kalamazoo. Director Baker, I see you back there. I see you back there, and I see your people that are working, you know, COO Lam talked about the work of your crews. I have personally seen them working really hard on the streets of Kalamazoo to try and get all of these falling leaves before the snow flies. I want to thank them, and I'll be in touch to see how many donuts they want and when, and I will get them donuts because they so deserve it. Please let them know from a grateful community about the work that they do. The parade was mentioned, the Saturday, the parade, 11 o'clock. Bring your families, bring your friends, bring your neighbors, come down and be downtown among your community. As I've said many times before, the word "community" means to have charge of together. It is a verb. It means to be active in your community. One of the best things you can do is be here, supporting all of these people that are marching in front of you, throwing candy at you, and really just trying to bring joy and goodwill into the holiday season. So, it is always a wonderful time. Sounds like the weather's going to cooperate, and we hope to see thousands of people downtown. And then also staying downtown and enjoying things like the holly jolly trolley and shopping local and keeping our dollars right here where they belong. And that's part of helping make Kalamazoo abundant again. So really, just shopping local. The tree lighting, we won't be meeting again before the tree lighting over here, so I'm glad that Clerk Borland didn't change our seats because we get to sit here, and then if we look out that way, we can see all the lights in the park as they're lit up. So, I love the work, and again, thank you to Public Services and Parks and Rec for working so hard to make our park so special. But that tree lighting is the 28th, Friday, the 28th, between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. at Bronson Park. There will be all kinds of things for families and folks to share. So, again, please come down for that. Some of the things that we are asked to do, and we all get emails, we get invitations to all kinds of things in this community. I sit here with a grateful heart, an extremely grateful heart. I was able to visit the ribbon cutting for the, one of the Reach Sober Independent Living Homes that was, is opening on the Engelman Court, just off of Riverview over on the east side. And Chris Pompey, the CEO of Reach Sober Living, is an amazing person with an amazing vision for housing for people in recovery in Kalamazoo. And he's doing great work for several, several people. And I just want to thank him publicly, him and his staff, for everything they're doing from just six months sober into an independent living contract. And so, the nonprofits in Kalamazoo do amazing work, and I appreciate them so much. That said, I hope to see everybody out on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. I would like to make sure that this new commission is aware now that one of the things that we do sitting up here from time to time is attend important community events that are not commission-driven, obviously. And one that I attended on November 14th, expressing a letter of condolence from this commission. That was to a celebration of life over Galilee, which was virtually, the sanctuary was virtually full. And this was recognizing Emmanuel Alexander Browning, young man who was 18, who very tragically and suddenly died in the wrong-way car crash that occurred just within the last couple of months here. There were other, other young people that lost their lives as well. Some of those celebrations did not occur in Kalamazoo, but we were asked to provide a letter of condolence, which I did, and I attended that ceremony. So I want to say that once again, part of the letter was that letting them know that we all on the commission are holding Mr. Browning's family, friends, and the broader community in our hearts and prayers as they go through this very, very difficult time. All life is precious, but the sudden and tragic loss of a young person is particularly painful for the whole community. And there were so many of his friends who were there and talked about the very positive effect he'd had in their lives. A sad event. As far as our recent election here, I just want to say, first of all, thank you very, very much to everyone in the community that came out to make your voice heard by voting, whether you voted for me or not. I appreciate it. And certainly, I appreciate the people who supported my efforts here and the work that I've done. I appreciate that recognition. But one thing I want to talk about just a little bit is a kind of a behind-the-curtain thing that happens when you are running in a local election. And that is that, as it works out, less than a fifth of people who are registered voters in the city of Kalamazoo regularly vote in our local elections. I don't think we've ever broken through 20%. Clerk Borland, you might know better than I, but if we have, it's been very, very little. And so, as a result, as you're fundraising and determining mailing, mailers to people, that one of the things you do is you pull up the history of people who vote in Kalamazoo. And you might look at the 2003, and I'm not talking about people that vote in national elections, I'm talking about people that vote in the local elections. You'd have to raise a vast amount of money to send a mailer to every registered voter in the city of Kalamazoo. So you look at people who voted in 2003, and maybe people that voted in 2001, those local elections, those local return elections. And generally speaking, that's how you create your mailing list. You're trying to get to people who are likely to vote. And it's just a fact, and it's driven by a variety of things. One of them is fundraising. And this time, I, you know, I had a reasonably good fundraising effort, and I decided to broaden that mailing list and mailed to many, many more voters who had not necessarily voted in our local elections, in an attempt to try to increase voter turnout and interest. I'm not certain whether it ended up having any particular effect, we'll never really know. It's kind of like doing an ad and you don't really know for a fact how effective it was. But that said, I'm going to get back to the beginning, which is, thank you to everyone that pays attention. I would suggest that probably the people that do vote is a more informed group of people because they think about the local election, they care about it. And I just want to say to all those who put their name in the hat, including those who were successful and those who were not, it is quite an effort to put a campaign together to not only raise funds, but to respond to questionnaires, to go to candidate events, and just make the statements that you think are important. And it is really, in some ways, an endeavor that requires a great deal of energy, particularly due to the fact that many people that run have jobs and need to support themselves and have other life responsibilities in addition. I guess just talking about the times in the past, but I just want to say this, is that I remember a time, because I've been around for a while, when there was a very robust and involved Kalamazoo Gazette and Kalamazoo. As a matter of fact, when I first ran, it was very, very important, the Kalamazoo Gazette had candidate nights. They actually endorsed candidates based on current candidate responses. And there were political reporters at the Kalamazoo Gazette that had worked there for decades and knew about all city functions and important efforts and asked very informed questions. That's gone now. And you can decide whether that's better or worse, but what we have now is a very divided news system in Kalamazoo. We have Now Kalamazoo, we have Second Wave Media, we have other kind of community publications that have popped up and community groups. As a result, for those of us that are running, you'll get questionnaire after questionnaire after questionnaire from a variety of groups and a variety of publications and people sponsoring their own events, which adds to the complexity of the whole business, but I still don't feel, in some ways, still gives the platform you'd like for a fully informed voting public. But that's where we're at. So, we have the opportunity now to continue to do the work, to try to be as public and communicative as possible about the work that we're doing, to make sure that people are aware of it, not just two years from now, but now, and hopefully feel more engaged in what I consider to be the absolute, and for me, almost primary importance of local politics. There's so much, and I know we're consumed by national news right now, which can be completely disconcerting and distracting, but here locally, we still have good work to do. And the things that we do, I think from time to time, or maybe many times, have more of an effect on our everyday lives than what's happening nationally. So, back to the beginning, thank you to everyone that took the time and made the effort to cast a ballot in this election. Now we need a motion to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged communication. Is there someone who'd like to make a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Slaby. Clerk Borland, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Duncan.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Prado.
Yes.
Commissioner Slaby.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes. I love you, Kalamazoo. We are a jerk.